And you're with the family, with those who were also responding to that too. Be with our community as they continue to give from that. And we're grateful.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Can someone get me a pen?
Oh, yes. I've thought about it twice, but keep forgetting. Oh.
We'll go ahead and look, we'll discuss the approval of the minutes. Have you had an opportunity to look at the minutes?
I have.
Any amendments that need to be made?
None for me.
I'll make a motion that we approve those minutes.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post none. Moving forward then to the ordinance on the budget. It says there's a ordinance that deals with money.
Well, we have to have a public, uh, can I have a public hearing at the next, yeah, so we'll do.
Okay, so we'll open this up for a public here, but let me discuss first of all what the ordinance is. The ordinance is, discusses the expenses that were appropriated up at this point, correct?
No, this is the budget ordinance for 2026.
Twenty twenty-six?
Yes.
Which is a result of?
Yeah, I can go over it if you like.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so this is the same thing we do every year. I met with my DLGF rep, met with Mike, met with John Markley, made sure everyone's expenses are going to be covered. And we really just kind of took this year as an example. We don't have any big projects that we're going to be doing next year. We're not buying any big equipment or anything, so, so we, I budgeted like I normally would, kind of special. Um, DLGF rep looked over it, said it was good. Um, everything was fine with them on their end. Uh, and then we'll just, we can open a public hearing, I guess. Oh, our tax rate, our tax rate will be 1.197 if we go ahead and pass this, which is lower than last year. I can't remember what it is off the top of my head. I haven't tried it down and forgot. Um, but it did, it did go down a little bit, so that's good news.
And we can get those numbers next time, like we actually want to know on this.
Yeah, I can get mine and make sure I have those ready next time.
Okay. Any questions for stuff? I have none either then. Uh, any guys have anything to discuss on this?
I guess just real quick, do you have our, our operating actual budget for this fiscal year? Is it the same, similar number or?
Oh, yes, yes. I pretty much, what I did was I basically looked at what we do every year and I take those numbers and I look at um, how much we have spent in the different appropriations and how much we believe we're going to spend in the, the next year. So I, if it looks like it's going to be pretty standard, which usually everything is. So like salaries, I always push a whole bit because we don't know for sure what we're doing for raises yet. We also don't, you know, take into account overtime, things like that. Um, and then like equipment, if we have anything that we're going to purchase, I make sure that's budgeted. And I even like, even though we're not necessarily going to purchase any town vehicles or anything this year, we still put it in there. Um, and then we, like we add so much each year for so many years for the cycle that we do. Um, and then I, yeah, I just budget what, what we can basically and then use the current year as a, um, guide. And then there's forms I have to go through on, on, um, with the DLGF rather than she takes our numbers from this year and she makes sure everything is right and looks good on what I've budgeted, um, for the next year and we build from there. And, yeah. So it's pretty, so it's very similar to last year's. We, like we just, we're not going to be spending a lot of like NVA because we don't have any road projects. Or, you know, so I took that into account, um, on that and then, but I, I usually use the current year as a model for the next year.
Does, uh, does your DLGF talk about, rep, did they talk about any differences in the, than you?
No. No, but we know there's a lot of uncertainty coming, especially in 2027. So 2027, I think that 2026 will be a year of kind of seeing what happens because I think everybody's really unsure right now and just keeping our, our costs as low as possible and just kind of, that's, that's one big reason I didn't want to do any projects this year, was just to sit and chill for a little bit because we don't know what 2027 will look like. And it sounds like 2027 is going to be the year that a lot of those things really take into effect and, and all that, so.
Again, the, I think we've gone over this multiple times, but I'll talk about it. From my own comments, the 1.197, one number that's on this budget form is a, is a calculated number, right? It's not a, it's a.
We don't pick it, no, it's calculated.
So we're covering our adopted budget and then that number is, is backwards calculated to come to that number.
Yes.
Anything else?
Uh, one more question for John. Is your, is this reflective of the additional?
Yes.
Yes, we took that into account also.
Okay, that's all I got.
Good questions.
I'm assuming that since we're not having anything for rainy day fund, we have sufficient funds left in that that we don't need to add to it this year?
We do, and then at the end of 2025, like once January 1st rolls around, we'll know what we have. So we can take 10% of, if we have 10% of our general fund budget left for the current year, so for 2025, we can move that over to rainy day. So I don't know what it'll look like, you know, so without knowing, I didn't want to budget anything and say this is what we're going to do because I don't, we don't know for sure. But what we can do is there is, yes, we do have money in the fund, but what we can do is January, I want to meet with my DLGF rep after budget time, where she's got a little more time, and kind of go over that because there's, you can transfer anytime, there's different rules with it. Um, so we can do that transfer anytime from general to rainy day. Um, so what we can, I, we can do is January's meeting or right beginning of the year at some point, look and see what's left from 2025 and then go ahead and we can do an additional appropriation so that we can spend that in 2026.
Maybe that's spending rainy day this year.
Yeah.
Anything else?
So, yeah.
I'll keep the hearing open for public, any public comments on it? Once, twice, three times, and the hearing is closed. The health insurance renewal?
I can kind of go over that too a little bit if you'd like. Um, so our insurance agent retired earlier this year. Um, so I've been working directly with PHP on this and I've talked to one other, we do have an agent, but we used for ADLAC and I did talk to them about, you know, different options and things and they, they made it clear that this was going to be our best option. They thought because of how we're grandmothered into it and we've had it for so long and everybody's happy with it as far as I know. I don't ever hear any complaints. Um, and, um, thank you.
I'm getting feedback right now, uh, non-verbal feedback from the employees to see what they think.
I haven't heard any complaints, nobody's coming in.
Is there anything unique that we need to do to work direct with PHP?
So they'll send us when I, after this meeting, if they're okay with the renewal, I'll go ahead tomorrow and email our PHP account manager and she'll give us the necessary paperwork that needs to be signed. If I can't sign it and Matt has to sign it, I'm sure we can get together for him to do that sometime.
Yep.
Um, but you guys just can, all, all I need from you guys is approval to, to do sort of the PHP renewal.
Maybe I'm becoming blinder and blinder in my old age, but I'm not seeing the actual rate, what, what premium is versus the.
They've talked about a lot about what, what's being covered.
I don't see a premium anywhere.
Yeah, I don't either.
It's on page, oh, because I have gave you guys redacted versions.
Oh, it's always on the page, yeah.
Yeah, so it's.
Let me explain why we did that too.
Okay.
Um, there is a green page that's redacted. It's because it contained the health rates of individual employees and that's not free for public knowledge because that's considered public health information and that's.
It's Matt, how you were that.
Geez, man.
I know. I think if you could, you could talk about the percentage. We can talk globally to change, we just can't talk about how it changes individually for somebody.
So our premium change percentage is 2% higher than it was last year. I think that's pretty damn good.
That's phenomenal.
Considering we're at 2.5% inflation.
Yeah, coverage doesn't change, I mean, everything stays exactly the same. So I thought that was definitely.
That's kind of unusual in the last six years.
That's a no-brainer.
Yeah, yeah.
No-brainer.
I think we look forward, I suggest that we go with the, well, I guess we.
I make a motion, I make a motion that we accept the PHP proposal as presented to us.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion here at none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There's one more thing I want to add to that because when we lost our agent, we also lost our HS, our HRA, HSA.
Hey, really?
Um, the, our administrator for that because it's his daughter and I, I don't know the whole situation, I just know he did. So PHP does do admin for those and I would like to go ahead and continue that with them. And it would cost the town, uh, $6.75, $6.75 per employee per month, which is, I mean, we were paying the other admin person, but we were doing that like once a year and I think it would be pretty comparable. I also like that it works in tandem with our PHP and I already have a contact there and it'll just be very, you know, probably. If you guys are okay.
I assume all employees are participating in the HSA?
Yeah, all they have to do is they have to turn in their, their forms and they, we pay the, we get the information from the admin and then we write a check sheet.
I'll make a motion and amend the proposal that was previously accepted in to include the HSA allocation.
I'll second that as well.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion here at none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post none? Motion carries. Anything else on this before?
No, that was it, sorry, I shouldn't have said that was already important.
All right. Ordinance 2025 dash six appropriation reduction ordinance. Uh, and trying to discuss this a little bit, uh, just illuminate us a little bit.
Yeah, so we did, we've done this in the past, we did it last year, uh, we've done it in previous years where it's just saying, hey, we're not spending this money this year. So we can just say that, um, it's just our pledge basically that we're not going to be spending this to, to go in tandem with our 26 budget. So that'll, that shows that this, that money will be in there for the 26 budget.
I think one of the first questions when somebody looks at this, it looks like the numbers are exactly the same on both columns.
Yeah, because the amount of reduction requested is on the left and then you guys would approve the amount on the right. So as long as you guys are okay with that, that's what we'll do.
Yeah, that's, I gotta, I gotta explain that.
It's just moving from one year to the other?
Yes.
Yep. Anything further on this?
No, I said.
Any questions for stuff?
And then does this be reflected inside the budget or outside of it?
So we, so I will upload this to, to my DLGF rep once we pass this. And that is part of our budget process was she knew that we were going to do this, so that's, that shows in the, all the budget work that we did.
It is already in there.
Yes.
Does that drive down in our, our budget for next year?
No, it's what keeps, what, it keeps it what you guys saw in the, up here.
Okay, I follow, I follow. Anything further? Like a motion we approved, well, it's, it's an ordinance money, but it's another money issue too.
Not spending those.
That's true.
Saying we're not spending it. Last year.
We're definitely not spending it, we're reducing.
And last year, I know we just passed it in a meeting.
Just to cover things, I'll make a motion that we adopt this on a first reading. If you guys are okay with, uh, the first reading, have a move.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to, to consider, is that a first reading or any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post none? Motion carries? Let's just to cover it. So then now I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025 dash six. On second then? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here at none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Let's then move on to town correspondence. We did get a letter from Jean and Bill Farrell. Jean and Bill Farrell wrote us a nice email. I won't read the entire email, but the gist of it is, is they had a breakdown while they're coming, traveling home from a week in Turkey Run State Park. They called AAA, just for everybody's information, AAA doesn't change tires on trailers. So put that in your nose and your back pocket. I didn't know that, so, but then they, they called for towing help, it was going to be a while. And that's when Officer Nushwander, uh, looked at the tire and helped him get them off the exit. The gentleman at the, uh, Markle 66 where exit came out and helped them change that tire and then they got underway within an hour and a half. Thankful to the people of Markle and they promised to stop in town and have a meal sometime. And I think it's a really nice letter, it's available for the productivity and Jean Farrell and, uh, Bill Farrell.
Do we share this with all those parties as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
Add on the back to everybody who was involved with that. Good job. Letter from Ride to Provide, dear friends, town of Markle. On behalf of myself and the Ride to Provide Committee, would like to thank you for the charitable donation of $500 for the 20th Annual Ride to Provide this year. We were able to raise $30,000 for the Dave Jackson family. Without your generosity and help, we could not have accomplished this for them. Bless all of you. Sincere thanks, Lisa D. Snatcher, Mayor Wolf, Ride Coordinators. Anybody? And then they've got a lot of signatures on here. All right. Operation Manager is reported.
Um, the water project on Lee Street's moving along. We, they've run across a few things here and there we've had to overcome, but we anticipated that. We started digging up something that was put in ground in 1898, so, or 1918, sorry, 1918. Some of the storm sewers are put in, in the later times. So we're almost done with, um, getting all the services connected on Lee Street and then making the final connections on the main. They'll go back and then start installing the storm sewers next week. Um, once that's done, then they'll start moving, making their way east on the Spark Street. So we are actually on schedule so far, not on wood. So we do have a payout for that tonight.
With the, with the vouchers.
With the vouchers and stuff, but there is a payout for that. Everything looks good. And we're still fairly close to budget overlooking that.
Yes.
I do have a request for a valve exerciser. This is a tool that Moose has been, the water inspector, really wants us to utilize. What we need to do is have a plan so that we're exercising all of our valves and hydrants at least annually. We currently do the hydrants every year in the fall. Um, we'd like to put a plan together and start doing all of the valves in town as well. If they're open and closed to a valve on the main, it's very taxing. So this tool will help tremendously. However, they're not cheap and they're proud of them. The best price you can find on one was $6,000, first of all. So, um, maybe this is something we might purchase. Anything else is available that?
Mechanical or we shouldn't have a D handle or what are we talking?
Yeah, it's basically, it's a, it's a, like a DeWalt, right? How to DeWalt and keep, I think it's Milwaukee. Milwaukee, that's where I'm looking for. It's like a Milwaukee tool with an adapter that hooks on to like a D handle. So you can use it both on valves as well as hydrants. This is something that you can turn one guy loose, they can do a street and day with it. That'd keep you from beating that a lot of others.
And if that had to be done to the other alternative way, would, would the cost be the same or higher? Or the amount of resources that we'd have?
Well, they make different versions of this. They make some that actually mount in the hitch of the truck and those are significantly more. This is the smallest one that we could find that would basically upkeep someone from just doing it annually all day long.
I can envision it saving man hours, so it's kind of, we're going to have an ROI on it based on, it's going to take less man hours to exercise these valves with this tool than it would without the tool.
The other good thing about the tool is you can set a torque setting on it. So as opposed to a moose torque setting where it just rips the nuts off.
Nothing's that high.
This'll, this'll torque out, see, and break.
I'm not feeling that anymore.
You're thinking right along with me, I think the ROI.
Yeah, you have plenty of those that are in, inside property batteries too, right? Where you're going to have to walk to them, so you wouldn't be able to drive a truck to them as well, right?
Most all of them are in the street. There, I mean, there's a few that are off the street, but there's a fair few. So this is more of a time-saving measure as well as manpower. I mean, you're going to, it can take some time to sit in those valves.
Is there any kind of guarantee, like how long it'll last and stuff?
I don't know.
It's a Milwaukee tool, it is.
There's, the water class that I'm currently taking, there's a couple other communities that have that exact tool. Um, and they have had it for a while and they're very happy with it, so.
And you brought up something by the neighbor, I know with like, um, you know, um, I think I had Sears used to sell it to a craftsman. Craftsman used to be, or something wore it down, you just go get it. Is that what, Old Milwaukee, Milwaukee? Not Old Milwaukee, that's. We know where your mind's at. It's, it ain't doing it, but, do they have that same kind of thing?
Milwaukee has a pretty good warranty.
Yeah.
All of our shop, all of our shop tools are Milwaukee's.
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm good with going ahead and doing it. We don't have to make this a motion or anything, so, you guys are good with it?
No objection.
All right, we're good.
Um, we did liquidate the dump truck asset, we got 23.5 out of that truck.
Okay.
So that'll more than cover the cost of the upfit of the Deramax that we're going to make. So we had a war. The, uh, we have an asset management plan that we have to file every year. I do it every year. Typically what happens is I go through a new plan. I have DLC of a check in before I submit it. Also this year, our AK8 transition plan, which hasn't been updated since 2020, since 2020, as well as your Title VI, needs to be updated, um, this year. I do as much as I can to try and save on costs, but typically DLC would just do an hourly rate just to double check, you know, fill in anything I may have missed. So I'd like to go do that again. All three of these items have to be done to keep us eligible for CCMG grants, you know, they're still getting grants. So as long as you're okay with that, I mean, let me do that.
That's okay.
Um, I also have a contract, the scientist was the contract that I presented to council for the sanitary feasibility report for the industrial part. They already started it, but I just need some signatures on it, so you guys were okay with it last, last month. We also need to update our website. There's certain things that the state's kind of forcing us to do by 2026 or 2027, um, to make it more handicap accessible. Whereas if someone's blind, they can go to the side and do it right.
Visually, for people who aren't visually impaired.
Exactly. So, um, I've only gotten one quote so far, it's pretty hard, pretty high. I'm working on getting some others, but it's, it's not going to be cheap.
Really, just the quote you're looking at, is that to, to take what we have and update it to where it's, where it's accessible? Or to start from scratch, start over?
What, what, the first company that we checked into is a company that Wells County uses, Bluffton site is currently updated. Um, they have some basic templates, which is what Bluffton did, that you can just choose from. That's all they do is government websites. So they, they lay it out for you, they upload everything for you, get it up and running. And then they help you access it on the back end so you can put all your information, change things. And then if you need help, they can assist you with it. But all of that comes with an annual fee that's close to $5,000, which is pretty expensive. So I'm going to try and seek out some other options and see if we can find something that's not quite as expensive.
Yeah.
We're going to have to do it, if we pay someone to completely redesign the site, we're going to have at least a couple thousand bucks in any way. Um, I would just like to try and find at least a couple alternatives to see if we can buy a cheaper rate.
Yeah, it just seems like if they're, like especially if they're charging Wells County and Bluffton, that, if that's the same rate, how are they going to do like a community our size or even smaller, that just seems pretty high.
And I originally spoke to them, we thought that potentially if they're doing all of those sites for all the other communities, they might cut us a break if we do a package deal. I don't know if that's much of a break, so.
No, that's all. That's 20, you said 2020, what year is that, 2028?
At the end of 2026, beginning of 2027, I think. And then it might be an optional, we can have someone, I'm hoping I can find that on our card thing, where they can come in and take what we have and just fix certain aspects of it.
Yeah.
And then we can manage on the back end.
Okay.
Things are honest needed, so.
That makes sense, I'm still.
I'm still working on that. Other than that, that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions?
I do have two questions.
Yes.
One, insurance for both dump trucks? Have we told them that we got rid of one?
Yeah.
And have you told them about upfitting the Deramax? Should you change the value of that truck?
Um, it's not really going to change the value of the truck because the truck is the make, model, mileage, I mean, it is what it is. Changing what type of bed is on it really isn't going to affect the value that much. I mean, I can, when we do our adjustment every year, we, we look at our assets and verify, but I can tell when we update this truck with the bed. I just don't think it's going to change the value that much.
Just in case.
After weekend.
Yeah. Uh, CCMG, is there only one shot next year?
Yes. So if you want to get in, we can, you can apply it in October this year. And this will be the last time you'll be able to apply in the fall. Starting next year, it's, it's one time only, it'll be in July. So we'll just have one call starting next year. Um, I don't think that we're going to have, we're going to submit an application next year. Well, we may. We may submit an application next year for 2027. But we're not planning on doing a project in 2026. We have some things that we're working on for a potential sewer project that we, we could need to use CCMG for, um, but we're, we have to.
That will be in 2026.
So, but it would be on the 26 application of CCMG, but we, there's a lot of stuff we need to get in place for that application. Our, our plan is to not submit an application for 2026, which would be in October this year.
That's all I got.
Okay, anything else? All right. Tom Marshall, report.
Um, you got my report via email earlier. Just wanted to let you know that Officer Nushwander is going to be recognized tomorrow down at the Listowel Stadium. Craig, it's going to be recognized tomorrow at Listowel Stadium to the Accretive Criminal Justice Institute for his OWIs that he's gotten to be here, so he's going to get a reward for that tomorrow. So we're going to be going down there for that, so. And in regards to what you mentioned earlier this morning, or in the meeting, kudos to the guys, prior department, Officer Nushwander. Those guys did a, a fabulous job with that, that situation that we had during half a couple weeks ago. Just very sad for the, and those that responded.
When you say we, who is all going down for that?
Myself and Officer Nushwander and his wife.
Is it open for more than just the?
Boss. Him, and he bring one other, so.
Yeah.
His wife wanted to go down to see it, so. That's all I have for it, appreciate it.
Any questions, anything else?
Unless you want to go in my spot. I'll stay here in one.
We, we may want to clarify the language you used for the news banner. Uh, he's been recognized for the amount of OWIs that he has ticketed for. You said that he is.
He's got it.
To make sure that the paper understands. He has a base claim here for OWIs, that is right. Just a small, just a small clarification, just to.
We had 37 OWI arrests last year, so.
There we go.
We've been giving a quick, he's getting more for that. This is not the place to get an OWI here in Washington. All right, appreciate the clarification. Let's just go with the HQ report, please.
Uh, we have, Mark Wigerstein has stepped down as our Director of the HQ. I think he's already had his last day.
They looked at, they found a replacement, we were.
We have, I think we just have, I think he just had his last day. So he's retired, um, this summer. Um, they have a search committee out. I have not, uh, heard of him filling that position, but I imagine he'll be filled fairly soon. But congratulations on Mark on his retirement. And we do have a, um, a business that is going to move into the, the facility of the other half of the, um, manufacturing facility. Airsoft Terra is on the other half. Um, I don't think the, uh, the new business name is public knowledge yet, even for me. I haven't been told that, that there is somebody moving into that facility, so we, uh, I do believe they're using the whole, whole portion of that as well. So that's, that is good. I do that much trust now, they're all down there.
Any questions, Senator? Reason 38, I did not make the meeting, the last meeting. Were you able to go to that one or?
No, I was, no, I just wasn't able to go. But they did have a warm meeting here, warm.
But they did have a warm meeting here, warm stands for Warren, Roanoke, Huntington, Andrews, Markel and Malnet. Uh, was, did anybody go to that one, that was here over there?
Yeah.
We hosted.
Yeah, yeah, I was hoping somebody would be there.
Yeah, they can, um, I can, I worked there. It went well.
Yep.
It was good, good conversations.
The warm meetings they used to have years ago, they stopped having them, it was something that Interpol has revived. It's, it's a good networking tool, it's a good way for communities to, to work together and help each other. Especially with the current struggles that we're gonna start seeing, taxing and funding and things like that, so, um, it's good that we're doing that again. It's a very useful tool for all of us.
Just talking about best practices and sometimes looking at different kind of funding sources for projects, things like that. We are, and Mike Hartberg also comes and gives us a legal update as well.
And I know Stephanie had quite good conversation with Warren.
About how we do things and how they can reproduce some different things. Yeah, it was good.
Where were the next, did they say where the next one will be?
No.
No.
Well, it won't be Roanoke and it won't be Andrews and it won't be Markel.
Didn't Warren just do one too?
And Warren, Warren was the first one, so.
Moundetta.
Moundetta, or Honey.
Yeah. Okay, uh, that concludes that one. Limited public comments and questions.
I do have information from Wayne Metals, I'm not actually here representing them, but since I work there. Um, they've announced they're going to have a celebrate Manufacturing Day, open house, plant tours, light refreshments, um, things for kids. It is October the fourth, which is a Saturday, nine AM to noon. And it's just open to the public, so if anybody's interested.
Might be there at eight fifty-nine.
Right, I'm talking. I, I can inch in the door if I'm there, but I don't know if I'm gonna be there.
Anything else?
Since I would be part of the public, I guess, now, but also for October fourth and fifth, Copper Farms has a, October, has their harvest festival. Will have all sorts of unique things out there, but I, I am the one that designed and made the corn maze out there, so. So feel free to stop out the fourth and fifth.
We have the meetup park, that's what the twenty-
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven. There's actually a whole list there.
Yeah, we've got cards and coffee coming out this Saturday, so I did, uh, did Jasmine commit to it, thanks? Okay, so there will be, for anyone that brings a card and participates, there's no charge to come, but for anyone that brings a card, there will be free breakfast sandwiches. And we're gonna have the, is it that honey bean or the happy bean?
Honey bean coffee.
Honey bean coffee cart, they're, uh, out of Huntington, so they'll have a variety of different styles and types of coffee. Hopefully this year they will have basic black coffee. The one we had here last year had all these foo-foo frappuccino crampas, this is what, uh, they did not have black coffee. I drink black coffee, so I was greatly disappointed. Hopefully the honey beans will have black coffee. It's gonna be great, eight to eleven, right over here in the parking lot across from the Markel sixty-six. So, even if you don't have a car, Rick, if you don't bring your Nova, you're dead to me. But even if you don't have a car, you can come down and get a free cup of coffee. But I don't know that everyone gets a free breakfast sandwich. And we will be giving away, uh, a unbelievable Brio's Garage car detailing kit that's really cool, really cool, so.
That, that's in the morning on the twentieth, that evening of the twentieth, the fire department's hosting ice cream, popcorn, and movie at the fire station. So there's two nights that'll be.
Fire department.
Now, since it's twenty-seven, the warm will be done, right? Getting barbecue, it's free for everyone.
And it, and it's on here, and I'll keep saying it, it's always asked on the community page, Facebook page, when's the garage sale?
I know. I swear, it's like every other day.
They should just change the name of the Markel update page to when the date is for the garage sale.
But it's on here, it's a twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and then the following week is the cleanup.
In regards to the meetup in the park, we do want, and if you want to put this in the news banner, please do. We would appreciate everybody signing up and registering for it as soon as possible. Because Moose is gonna be smoking all the briskets. Last year we had a few briskets left over, which was fine, we sold them, recouped our money and everybody loved it. But it's kind of nice to know how many we're going to have. But if you don't sign up, please feel free to come, we will have extra. Moose will make extra, I will make extra, but it's gonna be, we're gonna have brisket, we're gonna have, the fire department's gonna do ribs. I'm gonna do the smoked mac and cheese, Moose is also doing smoked baked beans. Did we get one big enough to go ahead, or the extra thing to go ahead and do the chicken thighs, or we're not doing the chicken thighs?
Doing chicken thighs.
We're doing chicken thighs again. And, uh, Markel Riverside three-sixteens providing cookies for dessert. So, it's gonna be an unbelievable feed, I mean, it's just insane. Plus, we've got a cooking competition. So, best smoked meat, best smoked side dish, and best smoked dessert. And we will have five, we will have five judges there to judge each of these categories. And meat, the winner of the meat competition gets a hundred dollar gift certificate to the smoker shop. What's the name of it?
Barbecue store and more.
Barbecue store and more. The winner of the side dish and the dessert, each get a fifty dollar gift certificate, so. I'd encourage you to come. It was a blast last year. It was, it was disgustingly delicious.
It was hot, hopefully it'll be about, I don't know, maybe twenty degrees cooler this year, which would be nice. It was really hot.
And it won't be during your anniversary?
No, it's the weekend after.
We're gonna be on the bourbon's trail for our anniversary this year.
Okay, good. Any other limited public comments and questions? Let's move on into old business, something I brought up last month and I'll bring it up again. Last year, I, we said that we're gonna do a, a more comprehensive study on, um, employee wages to see where we're at, how we compare. Mike's put together a pretty good analysis and I've got material as well. I just need to clean it up a little bit, John puts things together for, please, we're not, this is not something we need to worry about this week at all. It's just something that, we're, we're putting this material together, we'll meet on it. And if things need to be followed up, this will give us enough time. The justification is two things, is one is we want to make sure we're paying competitively. Uh, that's the pri, the primary goal here. But also to make sure it aligns with where we should be compared to things. I think, just from my initial analysis, there's numbers that are gonna come out shocking, but then when we dive in, they're gonna say, oh, it's this, it's this and this. So, just be patient with us, we'll get the best information that we have. And I appreciate the two of you working on this too, thank you. But that's, we're around with that. Any other old business?
Yeah, I have actually forty years of old business.
Okay.
So, uh, Scott started working for the town back when they put everything on scrolls and tablets. So it seems like it.
It wasn't no internet.
He's been here forty years, last month, last?
Oh, yeah, in August, late August.
He's counted a lot of corn for years down that road.
He's always a tourist.
He always tell when it's harvest.
So, we do have a guy for him. There you go.
Anything else? How, let's see, uh, we'll start, so forty, how long for you?
Thirty-four.
Thirty?
Almost five.
Slacker to me.
Almost fifty.
Twenty-two.
Eight.
I don't know how long. Six years, I think. Okay. Anything else on old business? Let's move on into corporate report.
All right, um, general fund, we had eighty-five vouchers, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents. Water, we had nineteen vouchers, three hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents. Waste water, seventy vouchers, nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-six cents. Virtual, one hundred and eleven vouchers, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seven cents. Like Mike said, the API payout, so in that, um, for the leak project, the Lee Street project. So, I'm sure they'll really appreciate your approval on those and then how many leak adjustments this March. Um, and then the only other things I was wanting to touch on were the garage sales on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, and then the fall cleanup the following week. As always, just set your stuff out by the road where you would normally put your trash and our guys will get it as they can. Unless a scrapper comes by and gets it first. By the end of the week, I like to tell people, because I know of my phone calls, if by like Thursday you've still got stuff out there and you're nervous that it's not gonna get picked up, you can call. I'll write your address down and our guys will come get it.
To review, there are certain things that should not-
Oh, yes, no hazardous materials, no chemicals, no paint, no TVs, tires, refrigerators.
What about an old keyboard?
I think that, I don't know. It'll be okay? Yeah, we'll take it. There we go, you're excited. That's all I have.
Uh, any, any questions, Mr. St. I'll make a motion that we accept a report, pay vouchers.
A second then?
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries. We are adjourned.